Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 12th, Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilors Zepari and Parker, who notified that they cannot be here this evening. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Hope everyone enjoyed their long weekend and just want to thank our veterans in town for their service to our nation. I attended a beautiful, very moving ceremony over at the Subvets Memorial, I'm sorry, the Subvets Submarine Museum and the home of the Nautilus. It was attended by many, many councilors as well as Congressman Courtney and City Mayor Hedrick's actually served in the submarine force and described his time serving on submarines and the work he's doing in town. And so, again, thank you for your service to our vets and pass it off to Councilor Franco.
Thanks. I'd also like to say thank you to all the veterans out there and for your service. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting as well as the very well-attended Mystic Oral School Proposed Mixed Use Redevelopment Announcement by the, which was in attendance by the developer and economic development team. And I think there was a very positive response. I'd also like to note that I had seen this on Facebook, that Fitch is having its 90th year of football and would like to recognize previous football alumni during their halftime at the Thanksgiving Day game on 11/28. They're going to introduce them by decades. And they would like people from the class of 79, 94, and 99, which were championship teams, to please join in them for an 8:30 breakfast in the cafeteria, but they would also like you to RSVP at the GrotonSchools.org site. That's it. Thanks.
Councilor Heed. Councilor Obray.
I went to the West Side lunch, I guess you'd call it, for veterans. It was very nice. Kids did a great job. The West Side band was good and as was their chorus, as usual. I was part of the celebration Saturday night for Keith Hendrick. Riverfront Children's Center gave him the award for Man of the Year, I guess you'd call it. And I also went to the presentation on the Mystic Oral School, which appeared to be very well-received.
Very good. Councilor Bordelain.
Thank you. I, once again, want to also thank, like everybody else, the veterans here in town and not just the veterans, but also the military families. I, you know, being a former Navy wife in the community, I know the sacrifice that the families make, not only with their active-duty partners being away, but all the students that are also affected in the town. I, like Councilor Obray, also attended the West Side Middle School Veterans Celebration. The staff put this on every year and it was a wonderful event. The band, the chorus, and the strings played. And it was nice to see all the different veterans that were able to attend and they also were able to share a story. It was also very unique to have City Councilor Reggie Sanford there, who also was a veteran, so he was there as a city councilor as well as a veteran. So that was pretty cool. And the staff that put that on. I hope that this moves forward into the merge of the new middle school to continue that tradition as the West Side Middle School band plays for the Navy for a lot of their events that they have locally. So hopefully that tradition continues. I also attended the Mystic Oral School presentation. As far as an announcement goes, West Side Middle School is going to be having a fundraiser coming up this Friday, the 15th. I believe it starts at 7:00. There's still time to buy tickets. It's a fundraiser for the school. They use that as their annual fundraiser to help fund various events, to provide graduation parties and different things like that. So I've attended, this will be my third year in attendance, and it's a lot of fun and it's good laughs. The gentleman who hosts the trivia night is also a teacher at the West Side Middle School. So if you can come out and support, maybe get a team together or a group of people and it'd be great to see you guys show up and support West Side Middle School. Thank you.
Councilor Schmidt.
It was very gratifying this afternoon to go to a meeting of the Eastern Regional Tourism Council and to find out that it had generated over $7 million in tourism sales in the pittance that it had to spend of $135,000 in a very short period of time. And if it were to be able to be viable again, that's what we could expect in the future.
Thank you, Councilor Schmidt. Let's see, I attended the Subvets-sponsored Veterans Day Ceremony at the Nautilus with Councilor Baumgartner. And the Mystic Education Center Forum was very well-received by the public and I have heard all good comments about it. I wanted to go to Mr. Burt now. If you could just address something that was in your manager's report, please. The video cameras at the high school, please.
Sure. Last week, the police chief, me, our IT manager, met with the school, high school principal, Dr. Gannier, at their IT to discuss currently, and Bob Zagami, of course, was, he also did some legwork on it and was there. With the new schools, the will-be cameras in there, one thing we're wanting to change on that, though, is to make it cloud-based for the backup rather than having servers. We want everything going to the kind of same cloud-based backup. But we have, we have cameras in the existing schools, but they're somewhat limited and we can't access them at the dispatch or at, and the police department, which is critical. So we're working on trying to get all the same equipment in all the schools so they match and can be viewed in an emergency at dispatch. So that's essentially the gist of it. You can expect CIP for existing schools probably in this next budget.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
I have a question about that.
Yes, Councilor Bordelain.
A quick question. Is that standard practice that the police department can view all the schools? Is, because I, I know some other systems that went up in different districts and I wasn't aware that the dispatch was able to view them. I know they have cameras that can be previewed, but I wasn't aware that they're linked to the dispatch. So maybe if you can elaborate on that.
I'd rather have that.
Thank you. I'd like to just know, like, how that comes to be. Because I, even with some of the other, you know, schools, they're not necessarily linked into the dispatch.
Yeah.
Chief, would you want to come up and address that, please? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's not entirely uncommon, no. And it's really, if you guys watch the news, you know what we live in today with the hazards that sometimes expose themselves in schools. So we think it's a prudent move to make this. We've tried to do this for the last several years. There have been some IT prohibitors that have, that have limited the ability to view things at the, at the high school, but it's important. We had an incident back three or four years ago at Fitch High School. Some of you may recall it. It would be helpful to, to have visibility on things when our officers are EMS or fire going in there. There's exposure to the students that are there, so it's a safety precaution.
Perfect. I have one more follow-up with that. Wouldn't this be something we should talk about and approve before moving forward? That this is something we want in our schools to have that much of an oversight on that? I think that's something that, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I think it's something that we should be privy to.
Well, the premise was not done by, the exist, the new schools that are going in was decided the specs by the Permanent School Building Committee in consultation with the Board of Vets. And apparently this is what they want. Dr. Gannier wants this.
Oh, so the Board of Vets approves that, I see.
Yeah. Ultimately, really, the Permanent School Building Committee.
That's fine. I'm just curious, just not much mentioned.
Now, any new ones to change over would be under a CIP at the council level.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Just curious of the formality. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
If I may comment on, if the concern is 24-hour surveillance from people in the dispatch center, it assures you that there are busy people to begin with, that this would be used, that this is the capability for our dispatchers or patrol supervisors to be able to get visibility on an incident at a moment's notice when they, once brought to their attention.
And I, and I respect that. I just, sometimes, some people aren't for a strong presence of that nature if not needed. Just curious of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Burt, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are on to item number 4, 2019-708, October 22nd, 2019 minutes. This is on page two. Councilor Baumgartner, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2019. So moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the minutes? Councilor Baumgartner.
There should be a period at the end of paragraph four.
Can you give us a page, please, for the person that's transcribing?
I'm sorry, yes, page seven.
Page seven?
Yep, page seven of the minutes, nine in the packet.
And can you clarify what the, what the correction is that you would like?
The last sentence is, "She suggested the council learn from this ordinance first." There currently is not a period after the first.
Page seven of the minutes, you're saying?
Yep. Page nine of the packet.
So the third full paragraph, beginning with Councilor Franco?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
And it should be, I'm sorry, "mentioned" instead of "mentioned"?
Where is this?
After Councilor Franco. In that same paragraph.
Okay. Any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are at seven councilors. All right, we are on to new business. This is item 5A, 2019-699, Appointing Town of Groton Tree Warden. And I believe Mr. Burt wanted to speak to this before we started.
Yeah, I'm looking to hold this off for two weeks. We're going to also interview the person that does, who's the tree warden for the city. So we'll return in two weeks.
Any questions for Mr. Burt on the rationale? Councilor Obray?
Do you think we might be able to join together?
Well, it's contractual. It's not a, it's not a position. It's just, just looking for someone to contractually do some hours here and there. It's the, the work until we can get someone trained. Unfortunately, that train, Gary Scheier was our warden. Unfortunately, that training is only given in the fall every year. So we're going to have to have somebody fill in until then. But it'll be contractual, not a position. So we would just be using the same contractor that the city happens to use. I'm also going to follow up on a couple of their leads. So, but I do need someone pretty quick. I'm already getting some calls on that I need to have the tree warden respond to. So by December 3rd, I need to appoint somebody.
I was just wondering when you think maybe this job description was written?
Well, that's the law. That's what their duties are.
Yeah.
It's not a job description, because we're just contracting out. We're not hiring somebody.
But this document looks like it's pretty old.
Yeah.
Some of the wordage in it would make you think it was pretty old.
So, Mr. Burt, Councilor Heed wanted clarification. When you're saying, "Hold off for two weeks," would you bring that back at the November 26 meeting?
Correct.
Very good. Anything else on this particular item? Councilor Baumgartner.
It's come to my attention that there are actually some town residents that serve, are outside of the city of Groton, serve as the tree warden in some of our surrounding municipalities. So perhaps, yes. So just for public disclosure, you know, that they're.
We're going to, I'm going to reach out to Maggie Smith, too. She does Stonington. I had previously reached out to Rob Simmons. I haven't reached him back, but he's in that transition. I know.
Anything else? All right, we will move on to 2019-709 Memorandum of Agreement, 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds. This is on page 17. Councilor Franco, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve Town Manager John Burr act on behalf of the Town of Groton with respect to receipt and use of the 2009 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds to support regional set-aside projects and to approve him to execute said memorandum of agreement. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Heed. Mr. Burt, did you want to address this or should we go to the chief? Chief Rosario.
Hi. What this is, this, we're part of the Demis Region Four, which is the eastern part of the state. Essentially, the federal government gives homeland security grant money to the state of Connecticut and the state disperses it through Demis. We take advantage of these funds through the fiduciary agent, which is governed by the Council of Governments in southeastern Connecticut and runs through Demis Region Four as well as the Law Enforcement Council, which is ESF 13, which is the law enforcement part of it. We do get money through this, but not directly. The way it goes is this pot of money is divvied up among the five regions of the state of Connecticut. Those committees decide how it's going to be allocated. So what this does is it allows our town manager to sign an agreement where when those monies are dispersed for various things, that we can take advantage of it. Those things that we use it for, we have some equipment that's, that's been provided by the state of Connecticut through this grant, sign boards, message boards, things of that nature. We can use it for maintenance. But most importantly, we've been using it in recent years for active shooter training. So when we take an officer, and we've got five instructors at the department who go and do regional training for other law enforcement agencies as part of the Law Enforcement Council, when we pay for them to go to that, this money reimburses the department. So if we're paying for an officer to go on overtime to work at this, the town gets money back and they get some fringe benefits funding out of it as well. So unlike other grants where there's a direct funding source that comes to the town directly, like the next grant that you're going to talk about, this is done through the Law Enforcement Council. It's done through Demis Region, Region Four. So it comes to us in a, in a roundabout way, but the town manager, as a signatory, can allow us to tap into that.
Thank you.
I know it's kind of confusing, but.
Any councilors have questions for the chief? Councilor Obray?
I would assume, then, that that's why it's called a memorandum of agreement versus what they usually call.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-709 Memorandum of Agreement, 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-680 DUI Enforcement Program Grant on page 29. Councilor Heed.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution accepting the $61,080 and .91 grant and authorize Town Manager John Burr to act on behalf of the Town of Groton, including executing any and all documents and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Chief Rosario.
In contrast to the last grant, this is actually monies that do come directly to the town. The $61,000 is used throughout the year to target, to do, targeted DUI enforcement. Most of the times when we do this, it's through additional patrols that are set aside just to do hazardous moving violations and identify drivers that are OUI. We do that most, most often during the holiday season. So, you know, Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, those dates where we see an increase in OUI offenders out on the streets to keep the town safe. It's funded through the Department of Transportation. They get money from the federal government as well. That helps go out, helps us go out and identify these hazardous operators and where need be, make arrests.
Very good. Are there questions for the chief on this grant?
Are these the ones, I'm sorry.
Councilor Obray.
Are these the ones that you advertise where you're going to do it?
If we're doing a spot check, we do. By law, we have to advertise that in advance. We posted the paper. We put some notices out. But if we're doing roving patrols where we actually put an officer out there that specifically, specifically used to go out and identify DUI operators, so long as they're not doing a spot check, we don't typically advertise them. Although with most of these grants, we do put some type of advertisement out there saying, hey, you know, click it or ticket campaigns. We want people to wear their seat belts. We put that out. We do some news releases. A lot of times DOT will pay for advertising in the news media, on the radio and television. You'll see it universally. You'll see some, some advertisements coming up this holiday season where police departments will gather together under the auspices of the Police Chiefs Association and do some advertisements about, you know, holidays are coming. We're going to have more patrols out there. So specifically, to answer your question, no, we put out the advertisements. We have DUI spot checks, but when we're doing additional patrols, we do not advertise that and say, hey, this is exactly where it is and when it is.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this grant? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-680 DUI Enforcement Program Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
How is No Shave November going?
I had a, I had a military commitment last week, so I had to shave. So I had to reset. But everybody else is doing a lot better than I am. But we're making a lot of money off it, so.
Great. That's great. Thank you.
And it's for the cancer, the Medical Cancer Foundation.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 2019-5261 Sustainability and Climate Resilience Manager. And this is on page 59. And I'm going to ask Mr. Burt to start the conversation this evening. And I understand there have been some questions. So I'm going to have Mr. Burt give us the introduction. And what I would like to do tonight is to try to clear up as many questions as we can. And then if necessary, we can hold off to get more answers to perhaps the 26th. It would be, or the first cow in December, whatever works out better for everybody. Mr. Burt?
Logan. The town currently has a sustainability project manager position. Over time, though, that position has warped into working on the new schools. He's dedicated to that. The money was taken out of the, the money's now solely out of the school fund, bond fund. So that position's no longer funded through the general fund. The council had directed staff to come up with a new description to also do the sustainability but add in the climate resilience for one job description. What we did is we first took the current sustainability project manager position. John Reiner and I collected different, we tried to find similar merged job descriptions, sometimes just climate ones, and tried to merge the descriptions together. We looked at several dozen of those. I updated the description, then had Bob Zagami, John, and then Zell, from, Zell's, Steve are here, had also reviewed it. I made changes based on comments to reflect what they were saying. And then we had pulled up different salaries. When we pulled up those different job descriptions, Bob did a review. And it was kind of all over the place. Depends on exactly what you want. One of the things that Zell had recommended, that it be a manager position and have some authority so that you can get the data and get into the departments where you need to. The, we ended up going, we're recommending the same pay range as the sustainability project manager, because they're going to be doing even more duties. If anything, it would go up from there, but we figured probably about the same level. We think you could stay at that salary range. I did reach out, you know, part of whether you want full-time or part-time depends on what level you're going to, you want to go at for tackling these issues. Just to see what our options are, I reached out to the Council of Governments, asked them to put out something to all their member municipalities. Is anybody interested in sharing a position? Just to see if that were an option. Nobody replied that they were interested. That went out a couple of times from the COG. It was mentioned at a meeting, too. Let me see here. We don't, you know, there's lots of sustainability positions out there. The climate change part, the climate resilience part's a little bit newer. There are, we did find several dozen around the country, but none right here immediately next to us. So we don't have any examples right here. But there's some in Massachusetts. I think there were some in Rhode Island. So we do have some other job descriptions that we looked at there. Now, if you were going to have somebody just staff the resilience committee and they're going to do, you know, most, you know, kind of lead the way, you could maybe have a lower position. But if you want someone who's really going to tackle things and be a leader on it, then this is the level you'd be looking at. I was also asked, would they need a town vehicle? I don't believe so, no. I'm trying to very much get away from that, to not have town vehicles. I do think we want someone with some experience. You know, we don't want someone right out of college if you want that higher-level position. Were there any other immediate questions?
Councilor Obray?
So this position would be under you?
Yes.
And they would report to you?
Yes. Though I'd probably house them at the annex, just space availability. And part of the reasoning was just to make sure that it didn't look like it was just for one department, that it was working with all the departments, not operating in a silo. And then that was also the recognition, and it was all recommended. I don't know if the whole committee had, the whole committee for the resilience task force had recommended it be under me.
Had recommended what?
The resilience task force had recommended the position be directly under me.
Who would, who would be giving this person guidance?
Me, me. I'm sure both, you know, I'd have them regularly working in public. Part of the reason to get a higher-level person is that hopefully they'll hit the ground running on their own. We want someone with experience. We want them to help guide us, honestly, because none of us are experts at it. John Reiner's probably our most, our person that knows the most about climate resilience. So I imagine we'll be working pretty hand-to-hand with him.
Yeah, because I don't mean to be rude, but it would seem to me that that would be where he would fit in a little bit better as if he was getting guidance from John as well.
He'd recommend it be with me also for the reasons I had stated.
I'm sorry?
John Reiner had also recommended it be under the town manager shop position just so that it can be kind of equal and have some authority to go and get people to work with them.
Oh, I understand what you're trying to do, but, okay. I'll see if anybody else has anything to say.
We have Councilor Baumgartner and then Bordelain.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to be on the record for supporting this position. You know, as many of us have stated consistently, Groton is at a crossroads and our world, our planet, our entire country and our region will be confronting the issue more and more every year. And it's important that we have a voice here in town government that will advocate for coastal resiliency and making our community more sustainable, making our community and our town buildings more energy-efficient. And I worry that without someone who is leading this charge, that it may fall by the wayside. It's no fault of the town manager or the people who work for this town or even the council, but you just never know when folks will change priorities. And so I think as a result of that, it's important to hire someone as quickly as possible to develop institutional knowledge of the town, get to know the players in the town if they may not be from the town. And if they are from the town, they, they need to be, get familiarized in terms of how to actually implement the changes that we need to see in order to, you know, make Groton again more resilient and sustainable. Since, this past Tuesday, a lot has changed and the makeup of the COG will also change pretty significantly. And my recommendation to the manager, town manager is perhaps to follow up with some of the member COGS to see if they're, they'd be willing to share the, share resources or share position. I know Stonington, for example, the new for select man in Stonington will be very aggressive in tackling coastal resiliency. And perhaps that could be an opportunity to find common ground or an alignment on issues or share resources, which will ultimately burn down the cost of the town. But I think it's so important to have someone with experience. So important to have somebody who has fire and fire under their belly a little bit so to enact change, because it's not going to be easy. And most importantly, work with our incredible stakeholders we have, whether it's the task force or other, you know, conservation organizations in town that have, again, that institutional knowledge that will be their support in order to effectuate change and implement bold and big ideas. So I think that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Bordelain.
Yes, I, I too am in support of a sustainability and climate resilience manager. Like Counselor Baumgartner just stated, I do believe that we need to be ahead of the curve. I'm a firm believer in being proactive versus reactive. We sometimes wait too long and then we don't react in the way that we should. What this should look like, though, I think needs to take a little bit more time than what's presented before us, as was stated. I think that I would err on the side of caution of just throwing, you know, putting something forward without really doing a lot more research. We've been without one for quite some time now. I'd also like to see some type of pairing with the Public Works Manager position as well as planning and zoning. I think all of those things play a kind of locking system into the full potential. We can appoint someone in this position, but there's got to be some type of overlapping in accountability factors as Counselor Obray had stated, like, who does he report to? And how is all the, my, my statement, how is the collaboration going to come down? So, you know, with that job description, it looks, should, to me, start thinking of like, you know, they're attending the planning and zoning meetings. They're, they're working with the Public Works Manager. They're also in the meetings talking when we are bringing in new developers into the meetings. That should be part of the job description as well. Stating like, you know, with the new proposal for the Mystic. new proposal for the Mystic School, and I apologize, my memory sometimes, that person should have a stake in that, when, when talking about that. Looking to be carbon neutral, as all the things that we're stating here, we really have to make sure that this person is actively a part of those decision-making process of how a developer, it's great to have a developer come in, but how carbon neutral are they going to be? And, and putting that forward, that, that's, that's the way that we want to move this town. So I just hope to see some more of that. A part-time person would be a great entry-level spot to pivot from. It's better than what we have now, which has been nothing. So we can grow from there, but something should happen. But I think, once again, as I stated, the public works position in conjunction with this position somehow should be a lock and key. So who should be over who? I think there should be, I just get worried that if we don't add the right description, then we might lose some, some of the, the use of this, you know, position. So those are the things I'd like to see. I just think there's more work to be done. I think we, you know, as you stated, you're going to do some more investigation work. I'm not sure where we can take it. And what is the, what is the plan? I see this as no motion on it. What was your intention by putting this on the agenda tonight? What was the plan, just to talk about it?
The council asked me just to draft the description and bring it back.
Right, so this is just a non-action item.
Right.
Yeah, I think this is not going to be the first discussion. I also think it's appropriate to bring it to a, have a public chance for people to come out and talk about it as well. Involving the community is a great way to have transparency and letting people know that this is something that we're looking towards, and not necessarily that they're going to negotiate the salary per se, but let's hear from the community and see what their thoughts on the position are as well. I mean, this is a big change, and the taxpayers have a stake in this, and that's where I would like to see it go. Thank you.
So at this, we have other councils that wish to speak, but just for clarification, the manager brought back a description to us to go over. That's what we're doing tonight. It's really up to us at the end of the evening to decide what direction we want to give him further. If we wanted to recommend a resolution, we could do that. If we want to have him look at Stonington or whatever else, it's open. So it really is open at this point for us to decide what we'd like. So it would be beneficial for staff to hear from everybody tonight. That way, if you have specific concerns, that we could address them early on in the process, rather than waiting till kind of the end of the game. So we have Counselor Heath next.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I've heard some support for a part-time position or questions, is there enough work for this to be a full-time position, or should it be a lower level versus manager position? And I'd just like to commend the coastal, the coastal resiliency task force presentation that we had last week, and remind everyone, they came and they showed us all these reports that were done and efforts that were made, and basically underline that, that the ball keeps getting dropped without the right level person. So I'm really happy that this is coming back as a managerial position, as somebody who has some authority. So, and I think it's okay if no other community in Groton has something like this, because if Groton can be the leader, we can, you know, set the, set the tone, and others can join with us later. So just wanted to commend you for getting this back to us in this form with these recommendations. I'm a very strong supporter of this, so happy to see it. I know that doesn't ask a question or necessarily add to it, but I just want to draw, underline that it's priority.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner wants to speak again, but there are others who haven't spoken yet. So I haven't spoken either. So Counselor Schmidt.
I just want to say that I hope that this won't take too long. I know that we need to review everything, and I haven't actually had an opportunity to read anything before tonight. But we're late to the party, and I think that it's something that is becoming more and more critical with every passing day, every passing month, and that we cannot really delay it for a long period of time.
Thank you. Counselor Oberg and Franco haven't spoken yet on this. Would either of you like to speak, and if not, I'll go?
No, I'd like to say that, first of all, the committee, the two chair that you brought in, and we met, I was so impressed with what you've all done. I really am. And I am absolutely in favor of having this happen. And I also want to compliment John, because I don't know how he puts all this together in such a short period of time. So I hope you took your day off, and didn't work on this. But, you know, my only concern with this, and I do want to move it forward, so don't misunderstand that, but I want to, I want to know where we're going to get the money for it. And just a little bit more about how we're going to, I see this role as a person that's going to be involved in all these other things that are going on in our town. And how does one weave themselves into all these other things? So that's kind of, I'd like to kind of talk about that perhaps more. But, but, but the biggest thing is, we need it, but how do we pay for it? I would, I would, we can, we can find the funds, I'm quite sure, but I want to find them before we spend them. And so that's probably my only concern, because as was pointed out to me, once we do have it, we'd have a better opportunity to get grants and, and different things that will help us move forward, and that's very, very important. But I'm not quite comfortable enough with what we have here. So I want just a little bit more of how we pay for it and how we weave it in.
Sure. In terms of pay, being, you know, we're mid, we're mid-budget right now. It would be contingency dollars for the mid-year, and then you'd have to program it in the budget for next year. So that's how that would have to be done. In terms of weaving it in, that's part of the reason that it was recommended to be under me, because I have more authority to get people to, all departments to work with them. I would have the, him or her, I'd have the person coming to the department head meetings and, you know, really getting out there. And in terms of, by the way, in terms of amount of time spent on this, we spent a lot of, a lot of hours and resources have gone into this, so it's been thoroughly looked at. I do caution against getting too particular and, you don't want to list out every item they're going to do, because you want, and other duties as, you know, assigned. So, yeah, I wouldn't get too nitpicky or detailed on that.
I have great respect for what you do, John. Enormous respect for it. And I do usually absolutely behind you 100%. And I am under this 100%, but taking it out of contingencies, that's fine, but we haven't really looked at the budget. And I don't want to start something we can't continue. I just would have a little better feeling with it.
Again, I'm just bringing this back because the council requested it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that very much. But, no.
Okay, so we have Franco Granatoski, Baumgartner again, and Heath again. So Counselor Franco.
All right, so I also had, wrote a lot of questions for John and sent them in by email, so he answered the majority of them. A few of them that I have are, I mean, I'm in favor of this, I think it's important, but I also want to have a lot of other information and things filled in. So over, over the course of probably the last couple of months, I have seen that, maybe on social media, but that we wanted to make our town have a carbon-free footprint. And one of the questions I have are, did we vote on this, or did a previous council vote on this? Is this something that we've agreed upon going forward? And that was just a simple question. And it might go off topic a little bit from this, but it sort of is related.
It was on the agenda before, and I don't know if an official vote was taken or not. Does anybody remember?
Actually, it was just a suggestion that I made as like a goal, to say, let's try to get the town moving in that direction. Obviously, you know, whether or not you make it 30 years from now, who knows? But it was just an idea, and it was just my statement. It wasn't anything we voted on.
But then the council said you have your direction to write, that was asked by the council as a whole.
True.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm just wondering if it was a policy that we have in place as well? So, okay. And so with the growth that we're seeing in our town in the next so many years, another question I have, will we need to have other new job positions as well, possibly in planning and?
I can tell you, every year I get requests for new positions. I think I've got two requests for the new year. But, you know, each one's got their reasons for wanting it, and I, you know, I'd have to, you know, compare them, and I haven't looked at those new ones.
Because I do like.
What I can tell you is something needs to be done, whatever that is, just because we have roads that are flooding and people expecting, you know, me to do something, and I, some policy decisions need to be made, so whether it's through committees, whether it's through a position, you know, it's something we have to tackle, so.
Because I know also, we've had discussions where, like, for instance, the light officer, it's not a full-time job, but it seems like he's doing a lot of work, and it's becoming a full-time job. And also, my thought was maybe planning, and with the growth that we're seeing in our town, I'm sure you're going to have to have people going out to job sites a lot more and checking things out. Am I incorrect?
Yeah, oh yeah, we're expecting a lot more development coming up, yes. And Tom, and Tom is getting very busy with the zoning force, but John's been moving duties away from, some of the zoning, other zoning duties away from him to free up time for the light enforcement, because that's become so critical. And I could foresee down there at some point, so we're not at the point yet, but at some point, we might need more help there.
So my question is, like, how much, so looking forward at, on our budget and how this is going to impact it, as well as maybe possibly having to add new positions or expand positions we have, and taking this into consideration with those as well, I, I'm just wondering, how do you think that would be on our budget?
None of it's easy, you know? But again, we, there's a lot of things that aren't easy, but we still have to do it. I don't know how we're going to get through all the CIPs we need this year, but we're going to have to do it.
And is there any other staff position that you think could absorb this?
Definitely not, no.
Or would there be a position that could do this and possibly help with planning as well, as they're expanding? Or help with light, because they're expanding, or help with?
You know, again, depending on what the council wants done, depends on whether it's a part-time position or a full-time. I can easily see it being fully busy, full-time. There's enough to be done. But can I also see, you know, you get started with a part-time one? Could you get started, you know, I definitely think it's worth reaching out to new leaders in different communities, as suggested by Counselor Baumgartner. Could it be a planning split one? You know, again, it's all a policy decision. There's a lot of options there.
And would it be possible to have this position, as well as maybe give a tree warden on top of it and blend it together?
Well, tree warden would just be some duties added on to an existing person in public works, what could be planned, but that's, you know, that's not a lot of time. It's just getting to the training and the fall.
All right. And I had asked a question, and you sort of skimmed on it, was the job market for this position? So my question is, are there a lot of people out there with these type of qualifications? And what is?
There's tons of sustainability ones. There's getting to be more and more of the climate resilience ones, but it's, you know, it's a somewhat newer field, so there's not near as many people. I, I think, you know, there's enough organizations out there that have people involved that it crosses over. I, I think, Zell, wouldn't you agree, there's probably people out there enough that are versed in both sides of this?
Yes, yes. They're a pretty good group.
You want to ask Zell to come up?
So, are you comfortable coming up to speak on this?
Are you kidding?
We have to ask. If you could just introduce yourself for the viewing audience, please, sir.
Zell Stever, 81 Main Street, Chairman of the Task Force on Groton's Resiliency and I just spent a whole day with 200 of my closest friends who attended a meeting that was sponsored by the University of Connecticut Circa Program, which was completely, the whole meeting was about resiliency and sustainability. And so giving you some idea that 200 people showed up suggests that there's some serious interest in the state. We also heard from, representative from the governor's office in Rhode Island indicating what they're doing. And the point was made over and over again, that those who are able to capture the whole issue are going to make their communities much more economically viable going forward, because those that take the time now to try to figure out how to become more resilient and sustainable will be the winners. And so it was very clear, it was also very clear, particularly as we, we listened to a number of people from the state, from the insurance office of the state, the DEP commissioner showed up, the Office of Housing was there, the economic development folks were there, assistant commissioner level. And they were clearly saying that there's a great number of grants that are coming through the federal government, as well as through now being passed through to the state. And as you well know, our task force is unable to accept funds on behalf of the town, as we're not town employees. And so one of the big incentives for our going ahead with a full-time manager is that it's one thing to apply for the grants, but then someone's got to manage the grants. And these are not small sums of money, and they're, are pretty complicated procedures. And some, for example, I listened to the conversation about sea level rise, coastal flooding, hurricanes, and so forth. And, and the scientists in our state haven't got this all nailed down. But this is no reason why we don't go forward and try to do the very best we can in this community, because those parts, I mean, we have a couple of obligations, it seems to me. One is to prevent getting further into trouble, on one hand. The other side is, how do we protect and become more resilient of what we already have? And so this is a relatively complicated matter. It includes economics, includes social issues. We heard a whole lot of discussion about the whole concern about underrepresented communities, communities of color, and how they all play into this. And so this ends up being not just something that you would hand over to a person who had a master's degree or even a PhD. You want someone who's got the level of sophistication to be able to run between these programs to make these all work. And so I, I think one of the points that we made last week to you was that, and maybe I should repeat it, is that the, the task force did vote unanimously to recommend to you that you consider hiring a full-time manager under the Office of the Town Manager, because what's very clear is that this community, for whatever reasons, is operated in, pretty much in silos, as they call it, and that there needs to be a great deal of interaction between these groups. I mean, the school, the school, Department of Education, for example, our whole Board of Education, and how that all works, how's that being worked with public works in terms of energy efficiency? And how are we capturing that information? One of the things that we recommended eight years ago was that we start measuring this in a sustainable sort of way, so that if we know what we're using, then we can manage it more effectively going forward. So I think there's a fair argument to be made, and I'd certainly be happy to help John or the council and answer questions and/or work on this sort of thing. I would also reflect, John said, don't make this too complicated, because you'll never find anybody who's do everything. It won't be perfect, because you're going to have someone who's, who's been to a university and maybe a graduate school like Yale School of Forestry, where they study these kinds of things, but it's not perfect. And part of why this has to be really taken, it's essentially our senior, our, our most existential threat that we have to our community, and we simply have to make the best of this. And we, we're in a wonderful position. We've got good industry, thank God the industry's high up on the rock, both electric boat, the Navy, and Pfizer's, for example, as is the University of Connecticut. So the thought is that if we can grab some of this money, because this is not going to be cheap to do, it's going to take some, some resources. As I have, I think, said last week, when Stanford did this some 15 years ago, the person who, who did that brought in something like $20 million over a period of a few years, and more. and more than paid for. And the model that we've shown today by David Kors, the Assistant Commissioner of-
DECD. DECD.
DEC, was saying that Stanford now has a very resilient downtown, and so, it's just, there's one example. So, happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Councilor Franco?
So, my question being is, are there people out there that have these qualifications and for the job market? And do you think the pay rate is the range that we would be able to get somebody with these qualifications?
That's a hard question to answer. There are certainly qualified people out there, whether our salary's in the range. I mean, I'm not a human resource specialist, so I don't, haven't gone around to ask some of these colleagues what they're making, so I really don't, can't answer that question. We can probably find out for you, though.
Can we bring Bob up? Was he helpful in, with us?
We looked at, they were all over the place, honestly. We felt like this was about where this type of position should be. We both looked at the pay ranges out there, but they honestly were all over the place.
All right, because that was one of my questions. Could we require less qualifications for this, like, a lower range? And like you had stated, I know it's, I mean, a master's degree is on the requirement, and to come in at 80, like, I guess, starting at 80,000 with a master's degree and all these qualifications. I don't know if that's something that's really gonna happen.
I don't know.
I mean, we're, I mean, like, we're having a hard time, as Mr. Sagami has told us, even hiring directors and-
I don't, I don't think you want to lower the pay, I don't think.
No, I'm not asking to lower it, I'm saying, is this even, are we gonna spin our wheels with this again?
I'm hoping not. There's a lot of interest in these positions, because it is a position where you can make a difference, so there's a lot of people who, you know, that's the hard part about government. There's a lot of private jobs, sector jobs out there now, you know, benefits are diminishing, you know, government's not real, you know, enticing, but it's one of the places, besides academia, where you can do this type of thing and make a difference. So, I do think we'll have people who are very interested in.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna take my turn. I agree with Councilor Baumgartner, and Mr. Stever spoke much more eloquently than I could on this. I, I really think we need to move ahead with this. I don't think we want anything part-time with the, with the task that's ahead of us. We definitely need someone full-time to be taking this on. And I, I agree with the consensus or the decision that Mr. Burt and the task force made in that they should report directly to the manager, because then the manager can direct them to be a part of every department that he's in control of. We used to have a process in the budget books where there was a line item for every capital improvement project, and there was a sustainability impact that was noted every, with every CIP that was written, you had to include the sustainability aspect of it. So, something like that is something that Mr. Burt would be able to direct the person to do. As far as reaching out to other communities, if you are going Stonington, I believe Stonington Borough has already, I don't know if they have someone on staff, but they were ahead of the rest of Stonington. The meeting that we had with the Lieutenant Governor, I believe that they were talking about having a plan in place already for the sustainability, for the climate change.
Right, there was a plan, I think, just not a, not a position.
Right, okay. I think New London has somebody-
They did grant, they needed to do a plan.
Right, I think New London has somebody, because I talked to Mayor Pasaro about that, and the city has somebody that's on this already. So, we really are kind of playing catch-up here. And I would hate to see us, you know, lose this opportunity to go forward on this now. And, you know, we're very fortunate that we have the volunteers that are serving on the task force, but we need a town employee that, you know, the manager can hold accountable, that can staff these meetings, that can go after the grant money. You want someone with a PhD at least to be able to do this type of work, that has the knowledge, that has the networking, to be able to go out there and go after these grants and make the right connections to move us in the direction we need to go. So, I really, I would have no problem moving this forward tonight, but I understand it has to be by consensus, so I'm in line with Councilor Baumgartner on moving ahead with this. Mr. Stever?
Just to give you an example, the Bridgeport has a woman who, PhD, who worked at CIRCA, who took, who left CIRCA and went to become their sustainability manager. And we're talking about that level of person, and they're making a difference. I mean, Bridgeport's being held up as being a, a community, and it comes as a result of the superstorm Sandy impacting the western part of Long Island, or Long Island Sound on, on the Connecticut side, and there was federal money available, and they really are, are moving ahead in a very effective sort of way.
Okay, so, we're back on second time through, so we have Baumgartner, Hayden, Bordelone.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I think Mr. Stever took many of the points I was going to make, and, you know, I failed to mention that this position is gonna pay for itself, if they are effective then fold, at the very least. In the, if you can look in the job description, it barely, clearly spells out that they're to provide oversight for that grant funding. And as Zell mentioned, it's quite complicated when you're looking to get high-dollar, high-dollar grants from both the federal government and the state. Additionally, in terms of measuring success, we don't have anyone internally to, to do that. Again, this position enables someone, or this position enables the town to then measure what it is, what is working and what isn't working, where we can aim to become more energy efficient when it comes to building our, you know, new facilities in the town, identifying what sources of energy can be used to power that building, whether or not it's appropriate to have solar panels on buildings, and, and thinking about that before we actually put the shovel in the ground. So, just as Councilor Bordelone mentioned, being more proactive as opposed to reactive. And I think at times, Groton can get caught in that trap, and we're certainly better than that. Lastly, just a, largely support the, kind of, the qual, the list of duties and responsibilities, as well as the qualifications, but on the last page, it did speak to kind of physical demands, and I wasn't sure if, perhaps we should review it. It's almost written as if it's someone who, with a disability ought not to apply, and I certainly know a lot of abled people who do have disabilities who can certainly serve in this function, because at, at the end of the day, you know, certainly the issues of sustainability and resiliency touch folks who are disabled equally, if not more, than folks who, you know, are abled-bodied, people who, you know, are confined to wheelchairs, and, you know, it's important that they're able to get around on sidewalks that aren't, aren't flooded. And those are gonna be issues we're gonna have to confront more and more as, as time goes on. And areas that we are looking to be more walkable in, you know, such as downtown Groton, you know, if we're looking to redevelop that area, we ought to make it walkable, and, and a big part of that is ensuring that that neighborhood will be a resilient community. So, I think, you know, in line with what Zell was saying about, you know, that it's important for whomever, you know, serves in this position to have the ability to speak with multitude of communities. This is a very diverse community. We gotta break down those silos. Folks in Noink and Groton, Groton Long Point and Groton City, really, this is the one issue that brings everyone together. And so, I believe that is it. And just a quick question, you talked about the CIRCA program, and was there anyone representing Groton outside of you, who is, again, serving in a volunteer capacity and certainly not getting paid to do it? Were you the only person attending that conference that you know of who had any involvement in town government?
Just, so you know, Sarah Kelly, Dr. Kelly, went with me to the meeting, so the two of us were, now, there may have been other Groton people there that I was unfamiliar with, but at least we were represented, well-represented, the two people.
And these are the conferences that were, you know, folks are coming together from across the state, sharing best practices and ideas, and it's so important to have a voice at the table, and, and so, we oughta look to get away from relying on our volunteers a little too much, because we can only tap into that brainpower so much before we, we scare you away, so. Thank you again for all your hard work.
We don't scare easily.
Not even a thousand-year flood can scare you, so.
No, that's another matter.
Amen. Well, thank you.
Councilor Hayden, Mr. Burt wanted to add something, if that's all right, before you go.
I was gonna say, I 100% agree on the physical demands, that needs to be rewritten.
Very good. Councilor Hayden, and then Bordelone.
A statement and a question. On the, the pay scale that you devised here, I think, you know, I'm comfortable starting at that point, but, you know, it seems to be indicated that this person is bringing in $20 million and/or something to that effect in terms of grant money, we might be able to treat them maybe not as generously as universities treat their football coaches, but there could be some upside to this salary, but I think it's, I'm comfortable with that number that you've come up with, the range.
We could always come back if we're not getting the appropriate people.
Right. And then a question, where does the grant money come from?
There's federal dollars often going to the state, there's-
There's federal grants. In spite of what's going on in Washington, there's a fair amount of activity still going on through the agencies. I mean, the Navy's funding stuff, DOE's, Department of Energy's funding stuff, NOAA's funding stuff, FEMA's funding stuff, all kinds of, there is resources out there. Now, it's not as maybe robust as we'd like it, but there's a huge amount of money being, being applied to this, because it's, it's really very simple. These agencies figure that if we can get our communities more resilient, they have to pay less in the long run. I mean, it's an economic issue, it's pure and simple. So, they're still supporting this, there is state money, much more limited, that's supporting it. And I should also say that there are a number of, it looks like a number of private foundations and so forth that are supporting various parts of this. I mean, you have had the Nature Conservancy come before you, Adam, Wetchell came and talked to you, and that's a not-for-profit organization that is doing, so there's, there's a number of sources. I get a list from our library once a week, and it's, it's a long enough list that it takes some time to actually go through. Now, a lot of the stuff we won't qualify for, but a lot of it we potentially will. And, and there's all kinds of arrangements. There's everything from full cost sharing to not-cost sharing, and it just depends upon, and it ranges everything from upgrading vehicles that are, diesel vehicles, to low-income housing. I mean, it just, it's a remarkable range of resiliency issues that are, are being funded.
All right, just a follow-on question to that. For the town manager, are, are we getting these grants right now, or is this something that we really haven't tapped into?
We're definitely missing out on grants right now.
All right, thank you.
But just, but also to say that we certainly have gotten, I mean, those stack of documents I showed you last week, we certainly have been funded for things off and on, but the question is, have we acted upon them, and are we coordinating, and are they being, continue to be updated? And so, there is, I mean, we've already done a lot, but we have one way to go, that's my point. So, don't take this as being negative, it's just, we have an opportunity to really think of this as terms of economic development, as, as much as protecting the health, the health, welfare, and safety of our, of our citizens.
Councilor Bordelone?
Thank you. I just wanna just say that I agree with Councilor Baumgartner on a lot of his remarks. I almost feel like this position could also almost be defined as sustainability, climate resilience, and public health manager. So, I'm wondering, like, in what way there might be a piece that we might wanna add, because sometimes when you have sustainability and climate resilience, you also have some people who are also have that other credential, credentials that go on the public health sector, that not only look at, okay, the water's rising, but looking at us as a sustainable in a health aspect. Looking at the cancer rates in this town, we, it's wonderful that we have a lot of industrial facilities, but with that comes a lot of health concerns. And so, as we are in funding TIF and economic development and pushing that, which is great to bring in that tax base, we need to also have someone who's looking at our health and well-being. It'll be great if we have a lot of money if we're all here. So, my concern is, wondering if we can look at this and add, it would be nice to have someone that has a public health background that's looking at the water in our facilities. The Public Works is a, you know, might have one background, but having somebody that has the experience and knowledge of looking at the health concerns, our waste, you know, looking at those types of things. So, that, that would be of interest to me. And I have seen that written in California, where they have a sustainability and resilience with a public health aspect in there as another credential, or it might be something where we hire someone and be, are willing to send them off to get that credential. So, just looking outside the box, you know, not to just look at this as just a, a one topic item, we can, we can expand upon this. I also feel, you know, that looking at the physical demands, and I won't labor them, I have some underlines, things that I had reviewed that Councilor Baumgartner had already stated. I just, I also agree that that needs to be updated. I think a person in a wheelchair could perfectly advocate for sustainability and, or multiple disabilities, even with mental disorder. I don't think that would hinder them from doing such, so I, I agree that that needs to be revised and looked at more in depth. And that would be, but I, but I agree that this is something that we're behind the curve, and we do need to act. You know, we can say that we want all this other stuff, and how we're gonna fund it, well, if we don't have a town and we're all underwater, or we don't have the health and sustainability and the climate that we need to live here, we're, we're not gonna really be here. So, I, I would like to see this move a little bit faster as I, but I would like to see, like I said, this rewritten first and see how it, it comes forward for the next round.
So, I just wanted to say something, and I'll send this to Mr. Burt. The Resilience and Sustainability Task Force actually has Dr. Villagra on board, who addresses the public health concerns.
And, and, Dr. Kelly, who's a 31-year veteran at Pfizer. So, the two of them had a meeting earlier this week, to our meeting, to talk about exactly the issue of health in, in our community. So, it is, at least at the task force level, we certainly are, it's one of the big, big issues that we have. I mean, we've got the whole issue of heat, we've got the whole issue of vector-borne diseases and so, and so forth, and so, the two of them are, shall we say, wading into it.
I think, just to add to that, I just, I appreciate all the work of the volunteers, but like Councilor Baumgartner said, I also agree that if, if there's a chance to add in that public health credential, we're not losing anything, we're only gaining, and they'd be able to collaborate with our, our volunteers. That's, that was my purpose.
No, I agree, the public health's an important part. Now, if we make it a requirement, we're probably gonna wanna up the pay from what it's at, so we have to give some thought to that. And it may weed out a lot of people. So, it might be something like you said, where you preferred, and then you give them the certification otherwise. We also don't wanna get confusing, you know, with the Health Department, too, and what they do, the epidemiologists, you know, you mentioned about, you know, industry and health, that's more of an epidemiologist thing in terms of that, so we just wanna give some thought to how to do it.
Councilor Franco?
So, one of the questions I have of our council is, are we gonna set an overall mission and goal for this position? I mean, we have a draft description here, but like what was said before, was, are we looking to go carbon-free, with a carbon-free footprint in the future? Are we just asking them to look at our town? And, I mean, I'm wondering if we should give direction to this, if we're going to go forward with it as well.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Well, I, I know our days are numbered, at least for this term, but I, you know, when we look to regroup in the next council term, I think we should have a- when we look to regroup in the next council term, I think we should have a conversation about developing goals, high-level goals that could inform the Sustainability Action Plan, which would be developed by whomever serves in this position. So, I, again, I think those goals should come from us, because at the end of the day, the residents of this town, you know, they, they put us in, in these seats to speak for them, and one thing I heard over and over again was how important it is for Groton to become more resilient and sustainable, and folks saying, well, why isn't Groton, hasn't committed to becoming carbon-neutral by 2030, or looking to, you know, with our vehicle fleet, looking to utilize an electric-only fleet. And so, there's so many ideas out there, and I think we should really guide the, whoever is in that position and kind of create a very more, that, you know, they can kind of hit the ground running with to develop a more, you know, comprehensive plan with the guidance, of course, of the task force, or at the end of the day, the experts. So, I, I hope there's some agreement on that in the council.
Well, that's, I agree that if we're going to create a position, I think we should have some goals and maybe the mission of that position as what a direction should go in.
Mr. Stever.
Well, I have to say that in our last, two meetings ago, there had been some conversation about coming to the town council with some recommendations along those lines, and I, I can say at this point that you can expect that will happen. I can't tell you exactly when, but it'll, it'll be in the near future that I think there are some organizing principles that would make sense to have you adopt as the policy body for the town, and so I think you can expect us to, to do something along those lines, and that hopefully would be helpful for a position that you're talking about.
Counselor Hayden.
In regards to adjusting the job description, as Counselor Boardland was, was suggesting to maybe include something related to the medical field, I'm wondering, you know, I was trying to think about that, how, how would you do it? Because I know there are scientists and there are doctors, so is that something that maybe we could direct this person either to work more closely with, like, Ledge Light Health District, or something to that effect, or add another position, get some interns in, do something that would help? I, I don't know if somebody with that, with this kind of expertise would also be qualified to be a doctor, you might know a little more.
Let me, let me just say that, having had some experience with doctors in our family personally, for the kind of salary you're talking about, that's not going to happen, for starters. And also, I should say that, as I recall, some years back, the towns had decided that they should not try to handle a public health issue, and that's why you have Ledge Light Health District set up to assist the community. And in fact, Dr. Vellagra, who's on our task force, is working very closely with, and he, I think he told you at the meeting last week, he's actually volunteered his time to work on their emergency health team. I can't, I don't have a name for it, but it, it's the group that works. So, I'd be a little careful about trying to get this too sophisticated in terms of MD, and as I recall from my experience with doctors, they're good at human health, but resiliency and sustainability are a little more than just that. So, it's, it is a relatively complicated business.
Great, great. So, sorry, just a follow-on. So, how would you accomplish it? To be able to, to deal with the health issues and the sustainability and climate change issues?
I think people coming out of training for climate resilience now are introduced and take classes on public health. I mean, that's part of it, knowing that these are the causes of, you know, the causes and effects of things as things change. I think it's pretty interchangeable with the climate resilience, but I think it's also important, as Counselor Boardland said, to point out that we think it's important.
Yeah.
Okay. Back to Counselor Boardland and then Baumgartner.
As Counselor Hayden stated about the doctor, I don't think I was looking necessarily for an MD per se. I guess what I, some of the job descriptions I looked at, and unfortunately I did not bring them with me today, but what I saw, as I, you know, when you think of places that kind of react quick, looked at like California, places like Colorado and areas, and they had sustainability and resilient with a public health umbrella. Now, they weren't doctors, they were PhDs, but they had, as, as our town manager had stated, they have the understanding and interest that they've had some other certifications where they understand, well, we want to be carbon-neutral, why? Because, okay, and we're going to build this building here, and looking at runoff and addressing water concerns in the town, like, hmm, if we put this building here, it might, you know, tap into our, you know, looking at it from that perspective. So, that's what I guess I was trying to say, is not, I wasn't trying to hire another, like, doctor or anything, but more towards looking at that public health aspect, because the climate, climate change and the sustainability, that public health piece is, is why we're doing it in, in a lot of ways, if we think about it. So, the focus is sustainability and climate change and resilience, yes, but also the health aspects, because as the sea rise and runs off, we have runoff and things that are getting flooded and things that are getting contaminated that we're coming in contact with. So, that was just my thought. And like I said, it's a long shot, it's something to think about, it's in my mind, but it's something to think about, and, and how we get there. Well, we'll get there.
Well, let me assure you that the task force, at least, is in fact looking at this.
Correct.
Our second meeting with department heads was with Groton Utility, and there had been a long conversation about our reservoir, and I just should tell you that confirmed with the state health person who oversees that program for the state of Connecticut, basically has reported that we're, we've got a very robust water system here as an example. So, it's something that certainly the task force is concerned about, concerned about the health aspects of it, because with a lot of water, you've got real problems, clean water.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Counselor Boardland brings up such an important point. Remember, a few years, a few months ago, I was reading about Washington DC's sustainability plan, and they touched on those key aspects of public health, and as Zell mentioned, how climate change will disproportionately impact lower-income communities, communities of color, and we have to confront that, and, and we have to have a plan for it. And, again, having this position will enable this town to be able to articulate every single way that this town will be impacted by rising sea levels, warming temperatures, and obviously, there, there is a public health piece to that. You know, case in point, Dr. Vellagra talked about the eastern, eastern equine encephalitis outbreak that's happened, and it's taken the lives of so many, and you better believe that a lot of it has, has had to do with rising temperatures. And so, we, we have to remain vigilant, but again, the best way to, to remain vigilant is by having someone who can be our voice, who is in, in, who is in the room at, in meetings and going to conferences and being our spokesperson, showcasing the great work we will, you know, ideally we will be doing, but also ident, looking to identify ways we can improve public health and also, you know, becoming more resilient. So, that's really the beauty of this issue, is that it does have so many different touchpoints on so many key areas of public policy, and that's why we've moved this town to hire somebody to get it done.
And I just wanted to add, and I had a conversation with someone, and I'm not sure if I should, they wanted me to give details on the conversation, but I was assured that you would know what I was talking about. A few years back, there was an opportunity for the town to apply for grants for solar panels for public buildings, and I guess there were probably nine or 10 applications that went out. Nine or 10 of them sat on a desk at Town Hall somewhere, this was before you. Only one of them moved to a fire district, and that fire district pursued that grant and got that grant, and was able to install the solar on their building. All the rest of them died on that desk at Town Hall somewhere. So, this is just an example, a real-life example of something that actually happened here in town, where we lost out on the opportunity to, to move ahead, because we didn't have someone who was able to do these things and take them on full-time. And again, it's not necessarily default town staff. These things tend to get overlooked when you're worried about, you know, the snowstorm coming, or, you know, the, the water at the high school or whatever it is, but we, we really do need this position so that things like that don't happen again.
Boardland, Baumgartner, who was first?
Is there a possibility also, I don't know, like I said, I read a lot about this and haven't researched it in this state in particular yet, but a lot of towns that have not moved towards this, I, we know we spoke of grants, once we have it up and going and moving, but there might be, once we do, to help supplement the salary, because some, you know, they're trying, there is recognition for this, I don't know if the state of Connecticut has, but I'm just curious, has there been any, you know, thought, or has there been any research yet to see if, by bringing on something like this, being a forerunner in, in some aspects, in certain aspects of the town, where they might be automatically willing to give you a grant because you're working on that, you know, currently, so it might offset the salary. I have seen that in play in, in not Mr. Leinster State, I'm not sure if it's out there, but not just the grants we can bring in to help the town, but there might be something where, okay, we're going to bring this person 80,000, and they're willing to give like a $5,000 initiative or something to support our movement towards this. So, I'm, I'm just curious about that possibly, which would be helpful to look into.
As I mentioned, as Mr. Stever mentioned, we get that list of grants that's out there. I haven't keeping an eye, I haven't come across anything on cover salary, I don't know if you have.
No.
I haven't at this point. I have in the past, but not recently.
Not recently, but it is something to keep our eyes out for, so. When we look at, I'm just bringing it up because I know it's a hard number and people with the taxes and stuff, but there's a way where, you know, we can start talking to our people in Hartford and start, you know, bringing these initiatives back and, and helping to offset. So, that's something to think about.
So, we have Counselor Franco, Hayden, and Baumgartner.
I also recently saw that the city of Groton has this position on their agenda as well. Do you know anything about that?
I'm not familiar with it. I thought, I, I thought Dennis was taking kind of the lead on that, I didn't realize they were adding a position.
And if they added a position and we had the same position, how would that work out?
It would work together. As a matter of fact, they have a committee they're pulling together, I think Dennis is the lead, and John Reiner's going to be participating on it.
So, we could collaborate together with them and utilize it, both of our committees as well?
Sure.
Okay.
And that could be something that we could address at our next joint, joint council meeting, we could raise that issue. Hayden and then Baumgartner.
I think you were first.
Rock, paper, scissors.
This doesn't directly relate to this conversation per se, but I, I think Counselor Baumgartner mentioned Washington DC has a resiliency manager, and I think this is something to consider that is why it should be an independent manager who works with other departments and gives direction and has some standing. If you go to Washington DC in the winter, they actually burn their snow, you, you know, and you go to the parking lot over by the Chinatown area, there's a giant parking lot, they truck in the snow and then they just burn it. It's like, you know, it's going to be 80 degrees tomorrow, why are you burning it? So, they're contributing to carbon release in an effort to melt snow that's going to melt anyway. So, you know, if I was in Washington DC right now, I would call up that resiliency person and say, what are you doing? So, not directly relevant to this, but it, you know, I just thought I'd mention it as to why it's important for this person to actually have, you know, some leverage.
Counselor Baumgartner.
I'm not sure if they have a director for the position. I know they have a plan, so I imagine, you know, some, they do have a director, they played a big role in that. But just to clarify, are, are we truly hiring a new position? I understand the current clerk of the works who is doing work associated with the school building project, his prior title was Sustainability Coordinator. So, in effect, we're really not creating a new position, we're filling a vacant position that has been repurposed. And so, just, I think, you know, we, we've really belabored this, and I, I know I've certainly added my two or three cents on this issue, but I just hope when we're looking, when it comes down to budget season, that we're also scrutinizing every position like we are this one, and I would argue there are probably very few that are as important as this one. And so, I will leave it at that, but, so, this is important.
Okay. So, did you want to add something else?
May I just reply? I think we're adding another staff member to our total number. So, even if somebody moved from one position to another, we're adding a new number. So, it's not, it might be a replacement for this person and bringing it back to light, but I think it's, the question is about adding a new number to the total number.
Well, Manager Burt, has this council approved any new positions since the budget? Have we passed the budget?
I believe so. I forget the, no, since the budget? No, I don't think we have since the budget.
Not since the budget. So, is it customary to talk about creating a new position kind of halfway through the budget cycle? I, I know for purposes of, for you and planning and certainly Cindy, it's not ideal, but.
Yeah, you know, ideally, I like to wait through the budget process, but it's not atypical. I mean, it's an important topic and, and something that's been kicking around for, for a while, so I don't think it's inappropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Boardland.
Counselor Franco had brought up how the city is also looking to hire or have a position. Is there some type of collaboration? I know that was stated, but if, if, I don't know, maybe, maybe we can, we always talk about, like, doing joint efforts, is there any way that that person could work between the two in that form of collaboration? Has that been brought up?
I'm assume, I hadn't been told by him that it was a full, I assume it's a full-time one though, so likely not, but I can reach out.
But I know that we said we reached out for collaboration with others, but I'm wondering if there's a possibility, I mean, that's a short commute, and it's benefiting the coastal community of the whole city in Groton. To me, that would be a cost savings, where we could have somebody that's on staff to work between the city and the town, which is a great partnership with our, you know, within our town. So, I, I would support that, and I would, I would wonder what that would look like, and then, moving forward as the need would grow, then we might be branching off into our own independent, but I think that would be a sure way to get this moving, and maybe there could be some collaboration with that. And my other question was, the, the position where there was a person doing the school and then was supposed to have this but wasn't doing that, what was the amount of money that was going to be paid to that position that now was not being paid?
Well, that was taken out of budget. That was taken out of budget over a year ago, or two years ago.
What was that number, though?
The same, well, it's the same pay range. It's the same range. I don't know what he's exactly getting on that range, but it's, this is the exact identical pay range.
Even though this person's just doing this, and the other person was going to do both?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, I, I would like to hear more back about maybe trying to collaborate with, maybe with the city, I mean.
Okay, so everybody has spoken at least once, some multiple times on this particular issue, which is great. So, does that mean everyone has had their questions answered? Are, I'm not sure what you all would like to do tonight, if you'd like to ask the manager to come back at the 11:26 meeting with a fully fleshed-out item that we could vote on, on 11:26? Is that acceptable to everyone? Counselor Boardland?
If there was a point in which one was needed to collaborate to, I know that we can't, you know, it's considered, everything's considered a meeting, so if it was to be said that there'd be some discussion, how would that come out? Town Manager Burt, if, like, would that be something that we could sit in on and hear, you know, and talk with the city, or how would that come if you get some good information before then, you know, like how would we?
Let me just gather the information first, and I'll reach back out to the council. I, I'm going to predict that if they're adding one, it's full-time, and we probably won't be able to collaborate in terms of sharing the position, but I'll double-check that. Let me just gather some information and then back to the council.
Is there, Counselor Baumgartner?
And is there any new information or guidance that we provided you that will inform?
Oh, we're gonna, I'm going to look at any public health component to the description and change the physical demands, check with the city, is there anything else at this point?
I thought the city had already hired someone, I, I think there was an article that was just in the paper, was that where I read it, or did I read it on their website?
They have a grant.
Yeah, and I thought they had already taken someone in, I'm not sure, but it can hurt to ask, certainly. hurt to ask, certainly. So are we comfortable with directing the manager to come back for the 11/26 COW with a formalized description, and then we could, we could go over whatever new information he brings and potentially bring it to a vote at that meeting?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that? Okay. Council Obrey?
I'm sorry.
That's all right, go.
I'm a little embarrassed to say this, this way, but have we run it by Cindy?
Oh, yeah, Cindy's been involved, yes.
Okay.
She doesn't like spending any money midterm. Most good money ever.
Right, that's why I felt I liked...
No, she's been fully involved, yes.
Okay. So then, Council Boardland?
Is there a way then which that we can open it up to allow the public to comment on this piece that day as well?
So if this goes to the 11/26 COW, then at the council meeting where it would be voted, there would be citizens' petitions.
Okay.
So then the public could come out at that point and voice their, voice their opinion at that point. So the timeframe seems like it's working out well for that, if that's acceptable to everyone? Okay, so Mr. Burt, are you good with that then?
I'm good.
Thank you. All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Stever.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, so we are on to item 5E, and let me see, we are on, I believe we're on Counselor Obrey, for 2019-681 Town Council 2020 regular meeting schedule on page 65, please.
Motion to recommend a resolution for approval of the Town Council regular meeting schedule for 2020 as attached. I so move.
Moved by Obrey and seconded by Heeden. Is there any discussion on the draft meeting schedule? Council Heeden?
I checked this one and the next two against the calendar to make sure that there were no conflicts and that the dates and numbers and all that are correct.
Thank you. Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-682 Town Council Committee of the Whole 2020 regular meeting schedule on page 67. Council Boardland?
Thank you. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the committee of the whole regular meeting schedule for 2020 as attached.
Second, please.
Moved by Boardland, seconded by Obrey. All those in, oh, any discussion, sorry. Council Bumgarner?
Given the next council has not been seated, and we haven't had a conversation about rules and, just rules and procedures and perhaps how the council may or may not make some changes, I wasn't sure if it was appropriate to be voting on a COW agenda or even a personnel and appointments committee. So just wanted to put that out there.
It's traditionally done at this time of year for the next year, and then it can always be adjusted as necessary, but it's normal that it be done now. Council Franco?
Heeden.
And then, well, she put her hand up.
You're playing, I see what I have to say.
Just the first, after the council meeting, after the new council is seated, they do convene a rules committee meeting, they review the rules, if that makes sense. But it doesn't happen until after the next council is seated.
Any discussion on the committee of the whole regular meeting schedule? Council Boardland?
So if there was a change in structure necessarily or time, all that can be amended, or the amount of meetings, or all of that would not be unamendable at that point?
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And the last one is 2019-72 Town Council Personnel Appointments 2020 regular meeting schedule on page 69. Council Schmidt, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution for approval of the Town Council Personnel and Appointments regular meeting schedule for 2020 as attached. I so move.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Heeden. Any discussion on the personnel and appointment schedule?
Yeah, how are they going to do it without Rita? I know. I'll come back. You're here.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We have no other agenda items, is there any other business that the council would like to raise? Seeing, oh, Council Obrey?
If I could, I was just wondering if we could do a little research, I'm happy to do it if a town manager is stretched, but of course, I had brought up the question about the ballots, and it's kind of stuck in my head because I don't think that's something that can simply be done because of the fact that we have so many different nationalities. And I know knowledge has struggled with this already because they have, I think in the schools now, they're working with eight different languages. So not immediately, certainly, but I think as time goes on, I think we need to look at this and approach it carefully. So we are in fact taking care of the people that do need assistance, but not, you know, doing it carefully. So I just wanted to put it down as something that we could begin to look at.
So I've been in touch with the League of Women Voters, and they've been corresponding with Council Boardland and myself, and they are doing some research on this. And they have also said, in addition to the ballots, that you can get done in other languages, there's also a phone line where you can call in with, what was it, like 27 different languages, where you can actually call in. So what we're asking them to do, they're going to come back to us with whether there are state statutes that we have to abide by, or if it's something we can just direct, set a policy, let's go that way, if we could just set a policy for what we want to done as a town. But they're going to bring that back to us first, and then we can review what they provide and go from there if we need to do further research. But I'd ask just if we could hear back from the League of Women Voters, I think that would be a good first step.
I have no problem with that at all. I just, if something is initiated, I think we probably should all know, if, you know, just, I've put out the question, we'll have an answer, yada, yada, yada. And I wouldn't have this rolling around my head. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Bumgarner?
Just to piggyback on what you said, we'll be meeting with our legislative delegation relatively soon, and I think that is something that we ought to bring up to our legislators that, you know, perhaps if, you know, it's not a requirement to, at the very least, include Spanish on a ballot, that it ought to be a mandate. So, you know, we're, I think there are many ways outside of, you know, certainly working with our clerk who puts together the ballot, I think there are many ways to effectuate change that are, I think is also a lot more long-lasting that could be, you know, actually make a big difference, too, and not just our town, but other towns that may have also experienced a similar issue.
America? Any other other business? Council Boardland?
Just to piggyback off of that, you know, my intentions are, you know, working in the medical field, we cannot deny anybody the care despite the language that they speak, and we have to by law, by law, provide a translation line or someone to translate for them. They're not even required to have to bring their own translator. It's their right to seek help. And so I just feel, as people, you know, migrate here however they do, that they have the right to vote, they should have the right to have that ability to understand, and sometimes language comes last. You can speak English, but sometimes reading for knowledge, understanding comes second. And so making sure that people have that ability is only fair. Under other business as well, I just wanted to, I know I'm not sure of the direction, but looking at senior living in the town, I'm not sure of the umbrella and who's over all that, but my concern back when I was talking about lead water in this town, and there was testing, and there was a lot of positive lead water, were our senior ministers, our senior structures, meaning our, you know, affordable housing, was those ever tested?
Not that I know of, but I don't think the public health department has, it wouldn't fall under the town proper, but I don't, I can reach out to those, Steve Mansfield, and see if they've done anything.
Yeah, because just looking at our structures in the building, as I have been out recently doing business in some aspects of, however, just looking at some of the structures from low-income housing to senior living, there's definitely, raises red flags of concern about when has their water been tested. And I think it's an obligation their citizens in this town and on fixed incomes, and we need to make sure their quality of health is being upheld and as those buildings are outdated, and I just, that's one thing I'm concerned about. So I would just like some more direction on that.
I gathered some information.
Anyone else? Council Bumgarner?
On the issue of Mystic Coastal Public Access, have we heard back from the attorneys?
We have an opinion on the, on the powerhouse condo, I'm waiting for one in Euphorion next week or so on the Fort Rachel, and then I want to confer with the attorneys, make sure they fully understand it, and then we'll do something public at that point.
Great.
And David Collins did reach out yesterday, and I gave him an update, and we said thanks, and we'll wait for the further information.
Great, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? All entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Moved by Bumgarner.
Second.
Seconded by Obrey. All those in favor of adjournment say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:16. Good night off.